Good evening. Could I please have a motion to call the meeting to order at 7:22 to go into executive session to discuss contract matter, individual employee, and district matter safety?
Still moved to second?
All in favor? Thank you. See you soon.
See you.
Okay, see you in a bit.
Good evening, Byram Hills. The board went into executive session at 7:22 and we discussed contract matter 2.1, individual employee, contract matter 2.2, individual employee, and proceed district matter 2.3, safety. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will move on. Can I have a motion? There's no revisions tonight, right? Can I have a motion to adopt the September 17, 2024 agenda?
Someone said that.
All in favor? Tamara, you, should I keep track as Kelly's like?
Gina's got it.
Hi Gina Kelly.
We got that.
Kelly.
Gina Kelly.
It's good Kelly.
It's like Gene Kelly. There you go.
Let's move on to the consent agenda. And can I please have a vote on 6.1, personal items, 7.1, committee on special education, sub- CSE and CPSE, and 8.1, business items? Have a motion?
Someone second?
All in favor? Excellent. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let's move on to item number nine, special report, international travel.
Welcome to Melissa Stahl and Jen Spirelli. We have been talking for, well, Melissa's been talking. When did you start working here?
1998. It's 26 years.
About 98, Melissa started talking about international travel. And it is something that the district, for various reasons and various things going on in the world at different times, opted not to pursue. And a lot of it also was, there are some organizations that have travel trips during the school year. We found it very difficult for that level of responsibility during the school year with, there are just so many things that could possibly go wrong with the weather, with the flights that get delayed, school starts, people are back. You know, there's, there's a whole host of things that could happen within the school year. But we have always been listening to Melissa and this plea that we take these children out of this place and have them practice what they are learning in school in, in a more natural and realistic setting and to get them exposed to the world and to become more worldly. So we have been spent a considerable amount of time, a couple of years. Melissa has dedicated herself to looking at different programs. She's been on programs herself. Fortunately, she has children and, you know, decided to do that, to gain some experience in that way. And I would say is, has partnered really well with Jen Spirelli and in creating this whole process for us at Byram Hills High School. They didn't have to do it. They're not being paid extra money to do it, to do what they have put together. And they're doing it just because they want our kids to have great opportunities. So for that, I want to thank you. And also very excited for opportunities to come for our students in Europe, in Japan. And tonight, they're going to tell us all about a trip that they recently scoped for our students and what their thoughts are about it. And we are psyched.
Yeah, I'll just add that most recently, when we were launching the Global Scholars Program, was when we started to really think about global competence and our framework around global competency. And that's when we started to really dive deep into what type of trips would support our framework around our goals with global competency. And that's when we started to think about it. And not just global scholars connection, also through the World Languages Department and through Social Studies Department and other curricular connections that our students are making. So we wanted to make sure that trips and opportunities align with our framework for global competence and our mission statement, which is preparing students to be productive and responsible citizens of the 21st century. And we found a tour company that Melissa and Jen will talk about. And they participated in this trip that emulated what students would do during a trip so that we could understand the demands upon students, both in terms of the academic needs that we can make connections back here to, and then also to things such as safety and some of the pragmatic and logistical operations of doing an international trip. So I'll turn it over to our Assistant Principal Jen Spirelli and our World Language Chairperson, Melissa Stahl, who will give us an overview of their experience, what they think the kids will benefit from in this trip. Also information parents would want to have, thinking about whether this is a valuable experience for their own children and what our students might get excited about in the trip. So feel free during this at any time to jump in. It's meant to be a conversation. So I know Melissa and Jen have some slides prepared, but feel free if you want to interrupt or if you want to ask specific questions. And I'll facilitate that discussion if I can. So at that point, let me turn it over to Melissa and Jen.
I'm going to start and then Jen pass it over to Jen. So thanks. It has been 27 years, 26 years in the making. But here at Byram Hills, we go slow to go fast. So I think it was worth the wait. I'm excited to talk about the tour group that we've chosen, what we did this summer and the potential that we have for our kids moving forward. Chris has taught me, you always start every good presentation with a connection back to the mission statement. I just want to highlight the broad, the bold piece here. The means, the knowledge, and the opportunity to excel in order to become productive and responsible citizens and leaders of the 21st century. I'm going to keep talking about concepts that relate back to that as we go through the different facets of the tour group and the tours that we've chosen. So let me move forward. EF, Education First, is a company that we've chosen basically because of their experience and expertise. I can tell you firsthand that they have over 65 years of experience doing tours. They are a family-owned company. They have offices in every continent that they travel to. And in many of the countries, they have multiple offices. They're open 365 days a year. They are available 24/7 for any issue that might happen. They have, I'll show you a slide of all of the variety of different types of tours that you can create, as well as customizable tours. They have accredited, they are accredited, so students can get, can choose to get credit for any tour that they do. They also have a safety as a priority. So whether you have a medical issue or whether there's something going on in the world, they're very flexible with their touring and they're rearranging tours if you can't go somewhere because something's going on. And it just has a vast opportunity for so many different kids to do different things. So when you think about what could we offer our students here at Byram Hills, these are the different, you have to turn around and look, but these are the different types of tours that they have. Personally, I've been able to go on an educational tour to the Galapagos Island. I've been able to do the service learning trip to the Dominican Republic. We've had a teacher here who did a non-sanctioned school trip for the language tour. And down at the corner, one of the last things that they came out with is this Global Leadership Summit that I'll talk about because that's the one that we'll be doing this summer. Okay, so back in 2014, when I introduced global competency to Byram Hills through World Language, I was looking at different facets of how do you teach global competency? Because it was a new concept that really wasn't exposed, people weren't exposed to, schools weren't exposed to, nobody was doing this. EF, however, had a tour to the Dominican Republic for service learning for educators. And I went on it. They offered me a position on it as a scholarship. And I went on it and I learned firsthand how kids could recognize international perspectives, how they could investigate the world, all the facets of the global competency, how they could communicate with others in Spanish while taking action on a service learning project. So I came back with this great idea, like, this is going to be awesome. This is what we could do, but no international travel here at Byram Hills. So that was fine because it actually led to the creation of Global Scholars, which I think was the best thing that could have happened for us. Because like I said, moving slow to move fast, we learn what we have to do and we build that potential for our students. So EF learned to grow also. And as a result of global competency and how important it's become for our students all over the world, they've partnered with World Savvy, which is one of the leading organizations for global competency education in the country and internationally. So they work with schools to teach global competency. I received an advanced certificate from them in global competency when we were going into the Global Scholars Program. And we actually partnered with them for Global Scholars. And they came in and they consulted with us to do design thinking challenges for us. The schedule was actually a result of our work with World Savvy when we had the students work on changing our master schedule. So EF partners with them and all of their tours are rooted in these concepts of global competency. So when Jen talks about our trip to Japan and South Korea, you'll see a little bit of that come out. They also have these partnerships with all of these other places. And so when I think about what they've done with World Savvy and what that's done for us here at Byram Hills, when I look at these other opportunities for partnerships, I don't know where we're going, but it could be potentially fantastic for our students. The Nobel Prize Museum, I'll talk about that with the Global Summit as well in a couple of slides. So this summer, they, EF does something where they offer a tour to administrators all over the nation to feel firsthand what it's like to be a student on a trip. And they run you through a trip. This summer happened to be Japan and South Korea. The itinerary was chosen for administrators. There were 33 of us on this trip from all over the United States. All administrators of different capacity and many who had done many, many trips with their district and many who, like us, were just starting out. So it was a fantastic opportunity for us to network and find out the ins and outs of what do you do when it's your first maiden voyage? And what do you do and how do you build a program? And what do you want to do when you go to this place? Oh, and what do you want to do in this trip? And you got to try this trip with kid. And what do kids really respond to? And how do you do pre-departure planning? How do you do post-departure planning? What do you do to celebrate? How do you build community with your kids? Everything we were able to talk to with these people because we were on a bus with them for 10 days. Okay, so once we landed in Haneda, Tokyo, at the International Airport, we were with 33 people, morning, noon, and night, for 10 days. So you had tons of time to talk and figure out all this information. It was great.
Quick question. With those 33 other administrators, are they primarily from public school, private school, charter schools, or a combination?
A complete combination of everything. A complete combination of everything. So we were actually with five other people from New York State and they were all superintendents of public schools here in New York State. So, and they were all doing tours. Or one out in Long Island was looking to do a tour as well. So it was a great networking opportunity. And it was also a great opportunity for us to pinpoint what could be potential, I don't want to call it challenges, for coming to a district like us, our size, and with the student population and what have you, that we were able to ask other administrators honest questions and get their good feedback and how they worked through that. So that was great. We, I'm just going to show you really quickly what we did. We flew into Tokyo. We took the bullet train and then we flew to Seoul. And then we flew home from, from Seoul, Korea, back home to New York. So a couple of different, moving 33 people through the country gave us good insight on what's a good plan for us to do for our own trip with our students. So we did want to experience what it's like traveling with a group of people. And this gave us a good insight into that. But the other things that it did, and I'm going to pass this over to Jen, is talked about how are we going to get our students to optimize on what they're learning in this experience? Because it is outside the four walls of the building. And how do we, how do we excite them about global competency? And how do we do that in a world that they're not used to, with people that they're not used to traveling to in tight quarters with different schedules and everything like that? So with that.
One quick question too. Global competency is one objective. Do they also do like language schools? Or, or language, maybe not schools, but language immersive programs? That would be like a little bit longer.
So they have, you can do what they call like a two or, a one country or two-country combo where I teach Spanish, I could take them to Madrid and we can see all the sites of Madrid. I could choose to do a language school in Madrid where they go to school five days, learn language. And then in the afternoon, they'll learn to navigate the subway system or go to a couple of museums. So it's a little less of the touristy stuff and a more concentration on the language. They have so many possibilities. They have so many possibilities.
And there's a facility right in Tarrytown even, right?
Yes.
Where there's EF up there and all over the world.
For language training.
Yep.
And then we were in, we went to the main office in Tokyo and there, it was this whole floor of this building where all of these students were just learning Japanese from all over the world. It's kind of neat to see so many young kids in Tokyo just learning Japanese.
Yeah, with their EF backpacks on, just going there for tutoring sessions. It was incredible. So I'm summarizing our trip. And I can say definitely summarizing, I could talk about our Japan trip for hours, but I, but I will not, I get very excited about it. And we, we wanted to break up the experience into just some, to organize our slides a little bit into these three practices. Historical concepts, cultural practices, and communication challenges. But as I go through and give the examples through some stories and some photographs, you'll see that there's a lot of inter threads and entwining, cross-cutting concepts there. So the categories and domains are not explicit. So just to start, I was a science teacher and a science major, not a history buff. So going to Japan and being immersed, completely immersed into the history of it, it was really impressive to learn about the Shoguns and the Edo period, which I didn't know what any of that was. And our tour guides were phenomenal by using a lot of the structures and the architecture to talk to us about the imperialism. And these two pictures are just an example of how these historical sites are immersed right into the modern city. You can see the two modern buildings behind. And the, the whole country we saw was, was very much like that.
I just ask a super quick question too. Are the guides mostly sourced locally or do they have their, or is it?
Great question. So we had four tour guides. One was from France, one was from the more hilly mountain areas of Japan. The other one was actually more local. So the tour guides that EF uses, they have used before. So they were very excited to see Sebastian on Tuesday because they've worked with Sebastian before. And he was coming over from France. So they all had a really detailed knowledge of the country, of the places. You know, when we were going to a location, they knew the alley routes and the subway station. So yes, they were definitely.
They also speak the language. So if there's any problem, like, we had a problem, one of our, I was going to call a classmate, one of our compañeros. Now I'm thinking in Spanish compañeros. One of the people on our tour lost their passport. So within an hour, our tour guide had an appointment with him at the embassy to get his new passport and that was taken care of.
See that because that could happen with a.
100%. And that's why doing the little pre-trip is important. When we were in South Korea, we were on our way to the DMZ and it was such torrential rain that the tunnel that you have to get to the DMZ was flooded. And we were 10 minutes away from parking. She got the call that said, it's closed, you can't go. Within 20 minutes, we were at a different location, at a different excursion, just because.
She had a backup plan.
She had a backup plan. And she knew what to do. She made a phone call, she had the connections, and she got us into a new place. So yeah. And that's like when I would.
They sound like plants.
You know.
They were planted issues to the rain.
Watch for 10 minutes of flood.
Well, I can say.
Yeah, cue rain.
When I was in, you know, the Galapagos with a group of students, we had a medical issue and we were in the hospital within five minutes. And on the phone with her mother, with the doctor, like, everything was. They just respond that well because the guides have a connection to the office. The office calls everybody that they have to and it's just taken care of.
Something I learned too about them when we were just talking about these incidences that you do, happen that you don't plan. They also, when we visited their facilities in Tokyo, their office space, they explained to us how they have people on the ground, like, all over the world. And not only their offices all over the world, so that they can, if we were in, you know, Japan, but the closest EF member to help us, you know, was in China already, they would just call that Chinese EF member and they would come right over because they were the quickest to get to us to help in a situation. So they're, they're very global to, to speak with, with supports, especially in crisis situations. Yeah. So this is just some photos of Hiroshima's Peace Memorial Park. And just to emphasize the, as, as did our tour guide, the Peace Memorial Park. There to memorialize the victims of the bombing and the first nuclear, nuclear attack. But also, and what they really want to do is advocate for world peace here. It was just, it was a very emotional day for everyone. It was definitely the highlight, the heart for many of us of this trip because they really do emphasize the growth that they have as a city. They've put this memorial park right in the middle of where the nuclear bomb did drop. And our tour guide shared with us actually at the end that her mother was a survivor of it. So it was, it was beautiful, yet mourning, mournful. And really just to the legacy of Hiroshima from this memorial park. We have a lot of shrines. There are about, I think it's 80,000 Shinto shrines across Japan and 77,000 Buddhist temples. So EF was very clever and, and specific talking to us, you know, putting our student hats on as educators, saying, we are not going to a shrine, you know, and a temple every day with your students, right? We understand the stamina that it takes to look at these and to view these museums. We're very careful of that. We're very in tune to how the students are feeling. And when you visit three or four shrines already, they do start to tend to, to look similar. They have a lot of the same architecture and philosophies surrounding them and also in all in nature. So we, we were very much appreciated that being a part of their, you know, awareness of, of our students and for, and for us as well. This is an example from a Buddhist temple where we have these imas. There are these plaques where, where community members, visitors, tourists write these beautiful little messages on them and they get passed to Buddha and he receives them and then hears your prayers. We have a Shinto, Shinto, excuse me, shrine. This is a Torii gate. And these are parts of these cultural traditions that we learned that if you really want to do this authentically when you visit a Shinto shrine, you bow, you pay your respects, and you enter through the side. If you enter through the middle, it's, it's not really appropriate because you leave that open for the kami or the spirits who pass through the center. So these are all beautiful things that we learned from our very knowledgeable tour guides that we wouldn't if we were just walking through on our own. Once passing through the Torii gates, it is important etiquette to wash your hands. It's a cultural and historical learning here to authentically visit these shrines and, and follow this process. You have to wash your left hand first and then you wash your right hand first. And then you can rinse your, your mouth and spit the water back out. So all really beautiful experiences. I'm shifting to some communication challenges. Obviously, they have a different alphabet there. And we use Google Translate every second of every day. If you're not familiar with it, it is an app where you can hold it up in, to a sign like this and it will translate it to English for you from the language that you, to the language you need. But again, lucky for us, when we did take the subways, we did have our tour guys prep us beforehand in small groups, meet up in our mini, in our mini groups, pass out our subway tickets, explain to us, we're going to go on this car, we're going to stay together. I have eight in my group, six in that group. And we'd all get on and exit together. So very well organized. But you know, if you're a student, this is an example of some independence and resilience to, you know, maybe a little nervousness on traveling that way, navigating these new surroundings. But well done through our tour guides. These are one of my favorite pictures. And there are not much to look at if you don't know behind the scenes there. The two on the left are examples of two volunteers in a small community, a very well-off, affluent community with beautiful architectural houses, historical houses. And these volunteers, along with others, walk around with their yellow vests, asking the community, the public, anyone, to just be quiet. But as part as a typical Japanese communication style, I won't say in Japanese, but silence is golden. And what they're referring to is really finding beauty in the restraint of not speaking. So there is this kind of homogenous, looking at groups and really respecting your time to think. So I won't be speaking so I can respect your time to think. So they do have a lot of this etiquette and this understanding of there is, silence is a form of communicating. So these nice ladies would walk up to us in their yellow vests and not say anything. Just look at us with the silences on their vest. There's another quick example is an elevator. Going back to that etiquette and that communication through not speaking, young children are always in the front of the elevator to hold the door open while the elderly are always in the back. There's, there is no talking in, in the elevators. And what's really unique is too, is that all of the more modern buildings, elevators, had the panel on the right-hand side for the buttons. And then on either side, low, like very low by the waist, were panels on the right and the left. And we couldn't figure out why that was for several days. And finally, we learned that it was for wheelchairs. So if you're on the left, you can access your own buttons. If you're on your right in a wheelchair, you can access your right buttons. And you don't have to interrupt the thinking or make any noise in the elevator to disrupt the thinking of others, to ask them to press a button. So they really go to that in-depth community feel of, of respecting those, those norms. There's another quick example, just the elevator, same thing. It's actually a law in some territories to stay on the left. Again, you're just wanting to be mindful of the communication through silence and not interrupting others' thoughts.
I'm thinking, I wonder how this goes over, like the silence with American teenagers.
Well, and that's the experience that you have to actually start to appreciate is that, you know, you're taking a group of, of students there and they can't talk in the elevator. They have to be mindful of being on the left side. That's why it was so eye-opening for us of like, if we were to take students to Japan, what do we need to do that pre-planning, the pre-departure planning?
Right.
You want them to.
You have, you have to fall into line, right?
Yeah. And then there was a reflection process of really like, why is that? Is it because it's rules and being strict? No, not really. It's because you are being courteous to your community member. You're being courteous to others by, by doing that because they're silenced their communication there. So this is a great example. We went to a traditional tea ceremony and we had lovely geishas giving us a lesson in how to prepare green tea. And through the, in the end of the tea ceremony, we had a Q and A with them. And there were some questions as an Americans from our group that were very direct. And these lovely women, their English was impeccable, but their responses to our very direct questions were very indirect, very vague. So we, we were almost confused by their answers. And then in the end, when we all left to get on the bus, we're all talking about it. I think she meant this when she said this. Or did you see her body language when she said that? So we really had a great live example of that communication style that is in their culture because their, their answers were very indirect, very, very vague. And we talked about that with our tour guide and that was purposeful. That's how they, they communicate. Here is an example of problem solving as well. This is when we were in South Korea. Luckily, this public safety alert that came up on all of our phones as guests in South Korea was not about the 1 million mines that were right near us. This was about the public safety alert, about the rain that was coming. But we did not have a very quick way of problem solving that. And we were asking our tour guide. And apparently in, in South Korea, they get these public safety announcements all the time. And our tour guide's like, no, you're fine, you're fine. Like, no, we're not fine, we're not fine. Please explain to us what this is. And it was just about the rain that was, that was there. Here, we really liked this example.
That was my dinner.
You know, as a parent, I hear myself saying, just take a little bite. You don't have to eat the whole thing. And it's really helping our children and ourselves, the tools to see food through a humble, culture-wise lens. You know, we want everyone and our students to lean towards the curiosity and love than rather than the disgust and rejection. And you can see here, it says, yeah, boiled.
Yeah, so transition, the translation isn't great. It was delicious, I'll let you know.
Yeah, she tried, she ate everything.
But it was one of those problem solving. You know, you don't want kids to say, ew, it's gross. You want kids to say, wow, this is so not like anything I've ever tried before. So we had 15 minutes to go into a store to get a bento box, which was kind of like pick a meal and you couldn't tell what it was. There was no window on it. So I just picked a box and then I opened it and that's what it was. I had never had eel before, but you know what? It was delicious. I tried, we ate everything in the box. And when we translated, I was boiled-shaped flowered cancer. So it was great.
Great curiosity and just leaning into their culture. Great curiosity and just leaning into their culture. I I applaud Melissa for that, all of that. She ate it all. Um, we have here uh just some cultural practices too. And this one is a really small thing, but it really left um a lasting impression on me for across um cultural um just understanding. Um, you never hand money to anyone. So not only do we have to understand the ten thousand, the thousands and the coins, and some of the coins weren't even labeled, but they had a hole in it, and that was in reading the receipts. That was an education in itself. But then, and there's machines and the money comes out of the machine. You don't even have to interact with with some um with the cashier sometimes. But um if you do interact with the cashier, you never hand them the money. Um, you put it in the tray, you count your money, you put it in the tray and you slide the tray across. They take the money, they'll co- um count your change, put it back in the tray and then slide it across to you. And at first, I thought that had something to do with COVID or something like that with germs, and it's not. It's just part of their etiquette and their culture um and not um handing handing money off is kind of getting bad luck for for some of them what they seen. So um but I I did enjoy learning about that. Oh. Um, just take a minute. Um, here we have um some views of some um toilets and bathrooms. But let me explain that um the public seat, the public toilet seats and public bathrooms in Japan is an experience. Um, so you can see all of the, both of those, rather. I I had to eliminate five of the photos, but two, those are both public bathrooms. So um they seat light up, the seats are heated, they're scented, there's misting, there's music playing, there's sound machines, there's white noise, uh there's a call for help button. There's all types of days with different water pressures and buttons. Um, and you can see on that picture on the right, that is actually a seat um for a toddler.
Really is.
So if you're ever in a bathroom and and the seat folds up too, I unfolded it for the photo. But you can put your toddler in there um for safety and um but yes, visiting a public bathrooms in in Tokyo was definitely.
Very clean too.
Extremely clean. Yes, yes. So we did have to use our Google Translate app though to figure out which button to hit to flush. So um it's still, you know, problem solving and challenges.
TV in the back.
Yes, it was. Yeah, some some soccer going on there. Yeah. Um, so here's just a few examples of um our food food and how much um respecting the culture and taking it in. You know, um we were talking about even the food in their homes and how they eat and very few if we ever saw any frozen food and just the beliefs of of their way of living. Um, just some Korean barbecue on the left, a lot of foreign meats that we saw, a lot of um people trying these different foreign meats. And on the right, we did our own um tempura. So lots of fun and enjoyment through their food and culture. And just lastly, um we have uh the bullet train. The bullet train going two hundred miles per hour, so going from Tokyo to Hiroshima, it took about three and a half hours, where normally it would be like a ten, eleven-hour car ride. Um, so yeah, two hundred, yeah, that was, that was very enjoyable. Um, and just again, the same thing with harmony and respect of others. There was no talking on the bullet train too for um public, public transportation.
Hours?
Wow. Um, but overall, just the the trip, I think, you know, we're, it's uh, there's a learning opportunity in travel for wherever we go or whatever age we go. Um, and just hoping that our students get these experiences um to bring back and build upon and just having a full, deeper, richer understanding for others' cultures. And then in turn, through our reflection as a group even, connecting it to our own lives and having a deeper understanding and um respect for our own culture too. So.
So what trips are in the works at this point?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn over to Melissa to talk about that. There we go.
Um, so what does that mean for Byron Hills? Thank you for that, Scott. Um, we are doing in July of twenty twenty-five, we're going to do the Belgium, Netherlands and Berlin Leadership Conference, also known as the Global Summit. So uh this trip, the, you could do a pre-trip or a post-trip. The summit is three days long. This entire trip will be twelve days with one day on to go and one day to return for travel. I chose this trip because you can see you fly into Brussels and you fly out of Berlin. I couldn't imagine for a maiden voyage shuffling a group of students through multiple securities at airports. So instead, we'll be traveling via bus and via train on this trip. That was one of the reasons we wanted to do this little extension here. The theme of our trip or our tour is future readiness in a changing world. And so all of the excursions, all of the site visits that we do in Brussels and The Hague and in Berlin will be based on that. Once we get to Berlin for the last three days of our tour, the students embark in um the Global Summit. And I'll talk about that in the next slide. Our exact itinerary of what we're doing isn't set until a hundred and ten days before we leave. They want to wait to see how many students we have and then what's available for us. For example, you know, is something closed for renovations that they have to change or do something else? Um, and then every morning, as we realized on our tour, you get an itinerary um through your, how we connect with each other on the WhatsApp. This is the itinerary for today. This is what you need to be prepared for. Bring an umbrella, make sure you've got your camera. You need your passport to enter this place, whatever it is. That's how EF organizes themselves. So that's not done yet for our trip, but it will be done um pre-departure. Just like our trip to Japan, they will have, uh they'll experience historical concepts. You know, visiting old buildings of Europe, they will have cultural practices, exploring with the cuisine in Belgium and Amsterdam and in Germany. Um, they'll see the Berlin Wall. You can see more historical concepts with the Bradenburg Gate. And that's just a sampling of what they'll see. I mean, they'll probably see something like seven items a day. I mean, you're exhausted at the. The goal is to tire the students out. And I can tell you, it happens. By eight o'clock, you're like, can we go to bed now, please? Um, the summit is really what's exciting about this trip. And when I was back in two thousand fourteen, they had talked about, we're doing this summit and it's gonna have Jane Goodall being as a a guest speaker there. And they started doing this every year. It is a two-year wait to do the summit. So I planned this already last year for the summer coming up. Started enrollment last year and um the good thing about the summit is that you've got all these international students coming together to solve a problem. So they're gonna pitch a problem to them. What, how do we prepare students for future readiness in a changing world? And then through um design thinking, which is the model down at the bottom, um they'll come, and this is something that we use in global scholars as well, and I think social studies, and I even believe um startup uses it as well. So it's something that our students are familiar with, but now they're exploring it with other students from other countries. Luckily, the summit's done in English, so there's no communication issues there. But they'll work on a problem together in teams and then they'll compete to see which team has the best solution. Um, I'm gonna play a video really quickly. It's two minutes and it really captures what the essence is of the summit.
And soon, this will be you. Here, you'll learn more about yourself, discover what matters to others by hearing from world-renowned experts and organizations, and have a chance to make your voice heard. The most important thing to know about Summit is that the rules are different here. I'm Watch Series EFMC Adrian, and this is Bella, a recent Summit attendee turned student MC. Bella, how would you sum up the Summit experience?
These next few days are all about making connections. It can be finding someone who plays the same sport as you or has a similar taste in music. We really want you to open your eyes to all the wonderful opportunities that come when you make those connections.
Absolutely. Meeting new people can inspire a whole new perspective on the world. Tell us more about how that actually happens at Summit.
You'll be placed into small groups with people you've never interacted with, giving you the unique opportunity to get outside of your comfort zone by talking with one another and getting to know one another. Summit is a lot, but I was constantly reminded to approach each day with an open heart and an open mind.
I'm glad you brought this up. A big part of Summit is getting together in small groups to develop solutions to a global challenge. And it's all done using human-centered design. Let's fast forward to the last day of Summit. How are we feeling?
All the nerves and all the excitement to possibly get up on that stage and present in front of everyone. It's a huge accomplishment to be able to get up in front of anyone and do that. I had no idea how transformative that experience was going to be. It's not going to be easy, but remember, we're all in this together.
You're right, Bella. Summit is such a supportive environment to try something new. Talking to strangers, getting uncomfortable and raising your voice are just a few of the rules you'll live by while here. So now that you know what to expect, how will you make the most of your Summit experience?
So you can hear and you saw the connections to global competence. Students are investigating the world. They're communicating ideas. They're taking action. And then the winning team, the neat thing about the winning team is that their solution gets um uh displayed in the Nobel Prize Museum that's in Switzerland. So that's kind of a nice little thing for them to experience and they get to go see that if they want to go to Switzerland to see it.
Is this open for all students or just global scholars?
It's open for all students, actually, yes. Um, and I'll talk about that in a second. So getting to what the concept of this trip and why do we need to do trips like this? We want to create productive and responsible citizens and leaders. So when you heard what happened with our experience in Japan and what we had to manage through with thirty-three other people and what the summit offers them, you can see these skills happening. I think about the kid who might not be on a sports team. I think about the kid who's not in the theater team. I think about the kid who doesn't get to go away for camp to the summer. And how do they get to experience different leadership opportunities? And I see this as a great pot potential for that. We saw leaders ex, you know, emerge on our trip, um everybody helping each other. How did we have to listen to each other? How did we have to receive feedback? How did we work through all that as adults? And we could just see students really benefiting from this and growing as a result from it. They're independent. They're away from their parents and they have to make these decisions on their own. Um, so when you ask about who can go on these trips, so for this July twenty twenty-five, we've already started enrolling people. I started last fall, so we were taking rising eighth graders who are now our current ninth graders. Unfortunately, your seniors can't go on this because they're no longer students by the time we go on this. Um, we've done informational sessions. I will have one last push. I posted on all the classrooms for our language classrooms. I'll post for the global scholars classes to offer it to them. Our last informational session for parents and kids is on October first. And then after those enrollment dates, we'll start with the pre-departure preparations. It's important to get those kids together so that they know who they're traveling with. So they're kind of, they hit the ground running when we're in Europe, already knowing each other and knowing how to negotiate each other's friendships and things like that. Um, our next trip will be Japan and South Korea in next, next in twenty twenty-six. The benefit of that trip is that we don't have to plan it two years out because there's no reservation time. Um, we could tell them whenever we want that we want to do Korea and they'll, the South, Japan and South Korea, and they'll do the trip for us. Um, we struggled in a great way. It was a great struggle to figure out what Japan trip we wanted to choose. There's four different trips that are currently, you know, package deals that you can choose from EF. And I think we talked about Hiroshima being the most meaningful aspect of the trip that we did. And in our trip that we did was the only one that went to Hiroshima. To talk to that woman and have her talk about how forgiving the Japanese people were of the nuclear bomb and how they were able to just change their mindset and to think about peace and how they were promoting that, I said, our students need to see that. Um, they don't need to, STEM is a wonderful program in Japan, but they don't need to spend ten days in Tokyo. They need to see Osaka and to see the creativity on Osaka. They need to go see Seoul, Korea and see how it's just a little bit different than Japan. Um, so that's why it was a great experience for us to be on this tour because when I asked about the other three tours that were available, I said, no, they don't do Hiroshima and we need to do that. So I will be rolling that out in late March, this March of twenty twenty-five for the twenty twenty-six year. And that will be available to rising eighth graders, ninth graders and tenth graders.
What is your enrollment like right now for the next trip?
It's low because it was two years out, so it's a handful of kids right now. I'd like to get a, I'd like to keep it small. And when we spoke to all of the other um administrators, they said, your first time out, you need to go small. You need to keep it under ten because you need to manage so many things and just get, you know, how your parent meetings run and how do you roll this out and what's your timeline? They said, keep it small to keep it, you know, smooth, is what they said. So we're okay. We have a handful of committed student and I'm fine with a small group because it's our first time through. So we can figure out all those little issues that are gonna come up, and they're gonna come up.
Just to be clear, this summer, it's for rising not tenth, eleventh and twelfth graders, rising.
Well, current, well, let's go for current because it's this year. So current ninth, tenth and eleventh, yes.
In the future, in two years, it's ninth, tenth, eleven, twelve. You're adding ninth because you said rising.
I'm rising eighth. So when I start talking about it in March, I will pull from the eighth graders because they'll be ninth graders the following year.
Include one more year.
Yes.
And how long a trip is it?
So the Japan, South Korea is a twelve, thirteen-day trip because you have literally a full day to travel on either side. Um, that was a concern because it was long, but you're going so far, you have to spend that much time to see all the things that are there.
I love that Belgium was about that too, right? Ten days?
Yes, well, that's because it has the summit. So normally, they do this, they have these tours called two-country combos where you could do, you know, Rome and Madrid. And you can do those in five days and you can run and see everything and you're completely haggard when you're doing that. Um, I think these have a unique niche to them because you really want to participate with other students when you go to the Global Summit. And then to do Japan, you really want to commit to going away for a long time.
Going far for so long.
Yeah, and it's far. So there are different types of trips. Um, some teachers at the high school do non-sanctioned trips during the the breaks that do do those two-country, three-country combos. And kids participate in those. Um, but I, like Jen said, with the weather issues and trying to get back and flights and all of that, we can't be responsible for kids missing school, so we're keeping it to this timeframe.
And do you anticipate a bigger group for Asia? Do you want that? Do you not know?
I we, I don't know. I want, I want the right kids to go. The kids who want to be there, I want them to go. And I hope the ones that are there are receptive to travel and to learning about the world. That's all I can say. And if that's fifty kids, that's fifty kids. If it's ten kids, it's ten kids. We'll have a great time. Um, they'll learn tons, they'll reflect and they'll be better um global citizens when they return.
What's the? What are the housing accommodations?
Great question. So they don't stay in luxurious hotels, but they stay in safe and clean hotels. So, you know, Europe, you can get a two, three-star, which is not like our two, three-stores here, but that's what they have in Europe. Um, I can talk because my my own children have gone to Italy on EF tours. And, you know, Europe has small rooms, the air conditioning always doesn't work, the wifi is a little spotty, but it's safe. Um, they've been vetted, they've been watched. Um, they've been used multiple times, so they're used to EF students coming through there. Um, in Japan, our rooms were very small, size of this desk. Um, I could touch Jen in her bed when we were sleeping next to each other. So clean, so safe. So that's the one thing. It's like, it, they're safe and they're clean.
And and the hotels are used to that when we were at one of, I'm I'm losing track of which hotel it was, but when we were there, there was a group from Texas and a group from Georgia. And we were, we were like seeing them outside with their backpacks, getting on the bus and the, and the, we're trying to like, oh my gosh, we just wanted to go talk with them. But um I saw some of them at the counter. I lost my key. Okay, that happens. We can help you. So the the accommodations were clean, safe and very helpful.
What's the approximate cost?
It depends on where you're going. So the Global Summit one is about sixty-eight hundred dollars right now. And that includes all of the travel expenses, all of the sites and entry fees that you have for everything. It does your breakfast and your dinner. Lunch is usually on your own. Um, all uh, everything's included except for lunch, basically, and any spending money if a kid wants to have spending money. And then the Japan trip will be around six thousand dollars as well, six, seven thousand dollars.
Is there an opportunity for a kid who can't afford that to still go on?
So, great question. There are scholarship opportunities through EF, but in talking to the other administrators, they gave us fabulous idea for fundraisers for ideas like that. And how do you generate fundraising for the kid who can't go? One of our counterparts, counterparts in Pennsylvania said, I do fundraising. And then if we're home in our hotel by seven-thirty at night and I have done fundraising, I take them out for a cultural experience that I pay for out of the fundraising and we use it for that. If it's leftover. So that's how it works. So there are opportunities, yes.
What is the supervision like? I'm sorry.
So supervision, so EF has their rules and then we've decided on other rules. So we're traveling with an administrator, which will be me or Jen, if depending on the 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 trip. And then additional chaperones, one per six students, okay? Um, EF pays for?
Additional chaperones being with Byron Hills?
Byron Hills faculty members, yeah. Thank you for that clarification. Um, EF pay allow, you have to have six students to get one free chaperone, but we're going above that to make sure that the supervision is good. If I travel and there's a male, if I'm the administrator on the trip and I take one more chaperone with me and there's male and female students on it, I would take a male chaperone so that there's one of each. Um, and there's benefits because between the administrator, the chaperone, and then you have an in-country guide tour. You've got three adults traveling with, you know, a group of six students, for example, you know? And then it goes up every six, you add an additional person. Yeah.
Yeah, we just learned that we've all had that situation where one kid gets sick and the
Right.
person has to go with them and now who's with the rest of the kids, right? We're not gonna let the rest of the kids go with an EF tour guide.
Right.
But it's not parents, there are no.
We're not gonna have parents. We're gonna have faculty members that are experienced, traveling with kids um and students.
The cost to the students covers the cost, the expenses of the chaperones.
No, the one, the chaperone is complimentary per every six.
Per every six students, yeah, from EF.
So the kids aren't paying for that chaperone.
Right.
But you're gonna have extra chaperones.
But I, yeah, yes, we're gonna have extra chaperones. So we have to, ideally, we'll have enough chaperones that are covered. If not, we will have extra chaperones.
Sounds amazing.
It's a great opportu, you know, when we talked to the other administrators that were doing it, who have been doing it for years and they, this one um gentleman who, from Pennsylvania, he's been doing it for years. And he sent me the video that they put together at the end of all of these smiling faces of these kids. And then he asks them, reflect on what you learned most or what are you most thankful for? And it's just a moment that we don't get to do in the classroom. Like, that's the interesting thing, you know? You open a bento box of food that you've never seen before. You don't get to do that in our mom that often, you know? And then have to work through, this is the only meal I have for the next five hours, so either eat it or be starving. You have to work through that. And the parents aren't there to swoop in and save, which we always, we always want, don't want our kids to be uncomfortable. So it's uncomfortable and a really safe scenario. And that's where they learn to grow. We we grow out of discomfort, so it's a great opportunity.
Makes me think when we were starting Global Scholars, one of our rationale was that we wanted to, you know, have the world become our classroom. This is just that, you know, taking kids out in that world and connecting it back to the experiences in our schools. It just seems remarkable. Connecting it back to the experiences in our schools, which it just seems remarkable what our kids could come back with.
We have assemblies to, to put the students who have been on it, especially since, you know, 12th graders are gone. So you'll have all the students back. Would you be having assemblies to let other people of the school know?
Yeah, we should think of.
I think we could definitely think about, you know, can they go into different classes and chat and what? I think that's a great idea, yeah.
And to get back, right?
And to get their feedback once they come back to see.
Because it would be nice to do the bento box experience in a classroom. You know, any foreign language, any social studies class could easily
That's a great idea.
do that, so they could all experience it.
Bringing back some cultural aspects to our classes would be amazing.
First-hand experience?
Questions, I'm wondering. Well, thank you, thank the board, thank to Melissa and Jen. I think I'm excited about the opportunities that could come.
I'm really grateful for the opportunity, so I thank all of you for this, thank you.
Well, we thank you for taking that time away from your own families and your own summer, you know? It's great.
It's really amazing.
Sounds like an amazing trip.
So we'll continue to keep the board updated as we do this and look for announcements when Melissa.
Yay for our kids.
It is exciting.
To our community and reach out if there's questions for our community. If you have any questions, reach out to me, reach out to Melissa and Jen as well.
Yeah, awesome.
So you didn't both eat the boiled, the boiled cancer, just?
No, you didn't, you had a different one.
I had a different box.
Yes.
No, you.
I had the love.
Straw and raisin, lemon bar?
No. No, it's just, you just reach in and you pay the $9 and see what you get. It was like, you know, roulette.
And you're on the, like, there's no other food. Because the train's going 200 miles an hour.
I have to remember that Japan is the pizza.
No, yeah, oh, seriously? Oh, really? Oh, I didn't have, no, oh, that's.
Thank you so much.
That's awesome.
Right? Okay, next to item 10, unfinished business. And it's 10.1, the board goals for 2024, 2025. And it's discussion and then, then action?
So the last time I discussed the, the additions to the goals that we had, I kind of gave a thorough go-through of these. I don't know if anybody has any questions about it, some of the things that we're most proud of. I'm just so proud of Tim Kalkinecker. All the work with the MTSS framework, everything that he's been doing on the multiple-tiered systems of support for our students, advanced learners programs, the K-5 literacy curriculum, continuing the work with Orton Gillingham, particularly all of the work with, with Megan McCauley, which has been absolutely unbelievable. In the beginning of school and the startup of school and all of the things that, all the moving parts that happen in the beginnings of elementary schools that tie up a building principal and assistant principal are enormous. And having Megan immediately on the ground, working with teachers from day one and so well, and all summer, just setting the framework for that has been pretty extraordinary. So a lot of these teaching and learning, K-5 and 612 goals, Tim, you just have led the way with that. The social emotional learning, as you know, we're looking for, to continue with our character strong. We're continuing with these relationships with University of Michigan, the Cognitive and Behavioral Consulting Associates, ways that we can help support kids and even support faculty through EF. And that's all of Gina's domain. With security, this is also Gina's domain. District-wide emergency management plan, putting that plan all together, the reunifications that will occur and all of the transitions and changes that have gone on as a result of changes in requirements of, of security. Particularly like this CRG mapping, which is critical incident maps that are created by CRG to assist emergency response personnel when they come to our schools. Gina's been at the forefront of that and will continue that this year as a goal. Our cybersecurity, Kevin's doing a phenomenal job with his vertical support team to try, you know, they're, they're testing and I meet constantly going out with different tests to make sure that we're, we're staying up to date. And they've just been pretty amazing. And then, of course, fiscal accountability. We have our current year issues, New York State Ed, the Learning Commons. I credit Kelly, he has been on top of the Learning Commons in every way, in a, in a way that has, I think, continued to allow us to be on time and on budget and pretty spectacular. We do have the BHTA negotiation this year, so that will be in our forecast of work that we're gonna be doing. Alternate energy sources, the continued work with the buses, with the electric buses, a lot of work there. We don't want to stop with leadership development and succession planning. We have quite a few teachers who are in programs right now, who are doing really well. We have two who are gonna be finishing programs in May and have learned quite a lot and have really tapped us and their building administrators as resources. Have, I think, gone above and beyond in the work that they've been doing to try to learn more about districts in general. So we'll keep up that as a goal for our leadership development. And then education reform and advocacy, thank God we still have Scott. So he stood through 25 whisper resolutions last night. I was there for, I don't know, 18 of them or so until I copped out. But Scott stayed on and, you know, really stays us connected with Westchester-Putnam School Boards and the advocacy of things that are happening. Because so much does happen in our world today, like, you know, finding out that we're gonna have a student on the school board come September, when nobody, no superintendents knew that that was even coming. You know, but there, there are a lot of things that happen like that.
Things are happening more quickly than they used to.
They are, they really are. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about the board goals or?
Just a few questions, branching minds, is it, what, what is, I just didn't know what, is it a software package or is it?
Yes, it's a data platform which houses our universal screener data as well as some other data. And it allows us to quickly group students by tiers of support. Scott groups kids into tier one, two and three support. And then it also keeps the data longitudinally, so we can look at students over time.
And see how things are progressing.
Exactly.
It's what you've been asking for for.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
It's really good.
And then you?
Kevin will be coming at some point to talk to us about that.
Absolutely, yeah, in October, we can touch on it a little bit. And I'll, I'll explain in my assessment report what October's meeting will be focused on.
Some of the regional work that's being done on mental health. Does any of that go on here or is it too preliminary at this point?
Um, I think it's preliminary with what's happening there. I mean, there are certainly things with mental health that we're doing as a school district that aren't even on here. You know, like with Northwell Health and these other schools.
Right, that's what I was thinking, but isn't too, at this point, maybe?
We're, we're expecting brick and mortar by September of '25. So this would be a really great goal for us to continue for next year.
Okay, got it. And for the, the, where is it? Health protocols, is there really a goal at this point? Or is it just like a normal course of business that we do and doesn't necessarily belong with goals anymore? Just a question.
So I, I think the only reason it stayed on as a goal is because we see upswings, like we're seeing a COVID upswing right now that we know we have to manage and we have to be watchful of. I think continuing to keep ourselves focused on potential pandemics is not a bad idea.
I'm just thinking.
Give the list.
Oh, pertussis, like, yes, we've had more than.
And the leg was remained apprised of the, of just keeping our fingers on the pulse.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Yeah, there's no problem with it, just, no, no problem. And there's certain things on here, I mean, that just like, like in the financial section, I mean, there's a lot there. All of it is just good and important, but there's some things that just like jumped out this year, I think that will be so critical.
Exactly.
Buses being one, the state workaround foundation aid and the repercussions of that probably being two. And then potential development in the town and implications for Rome, like maybe that's three. So there's some like big things, but I, but I think this list is comprehensive.
Right, anything else? Thank you so much, Jen, for all the hard work and team putting this together.
And team.
And team, it's always and team.
Always.
A motion please to adopt the 2024, 2025 board goals.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? There we have it. Next, on to new business. And turning over to Tim for your assessment report.
I'm gonna try to do it from my seat now that I have a camera there and see if I'm comfortable not standing.
It's a discussion. I just. Oh, I did a motion, okay, fine.
Oh, it does.
Oh, no, never mind, that's for another point too. Okay.
Okay, great. So I'll present this year's assessment report on last year's data from 2023, 24. And I'd like to, these are my new favorite things on my first day at kindergarten, so this is Mario's first day. The kindergarten teachers have students draw themselves on their first day and love presenting pictures with Gina and asking her to analyze. My favorite pictures up here.
I love when the hands come out of here.
There's so many, I have so many of these pictures, they just.
I love that there are yours.
Delighted. And then we have teachers who do it on their last day of school and they put both up. And to me, it's just amazing to see the growth anyway. But that's always a reminder as we go into looking at data, it's really about the students ultimately. And so that just keeps us grounded in what we're talking about. So as you know, from year to year, these three through eight ELA math and science assessments are divided into four levels. And the green ones are proficiency and above, so students are proficient at level three or excel at level four or below proficiency. And if they're below proficiency, we're providing academic support services so we can intervene early to help kids get up to grade level standards by the time they get to high school. And that's our ultimate goal of the three through eight tests, preparing students for the high-stake tests in high school and making sure we're intervening early and strengthen their foundation in the content areas. I'll just remind the board that I'm going to show longitudinal data only back to 2018 because the state changed the assessments in 2018 and re-standardized to new standards, realigned them. So you can't compare to earlier assessments, so I stopped showing those. Also, remember in 2020, the tests were canceled because of the pandemic. And in 2021, the state shortened the test to one day and those can't be compared to previous. So I eliminate the 2020 and the 2021 data. So we'll look at five years of data from 2018 to 2020.
What are people doing that don't have Tim?
There's people like you that are there, there really are.
They're just all looking at the data.
Some data keeps out there.
That's exactly right, right?
Yeah, I like our data reports. So first gonna show reading, so we'll look at our reading data. This is the reading buddy, so this is our second grade student teaching a kindergartner. It's a partnership between classes where the students go and teach reading and it's just.
And expanding, right? It used to just be one class and now.
They've been doing that forever.
Love it.
It's so great, we love that older role model and the kindergarten kids look so forward to it, it's just incredible. So these are the results and I'll go through and explain them and I'll give some theories and hypotheses about some of the changes. So we have the grade levels up here, the N is the number of students who tested. We have the performance levels here and we're really looking at the students, the percent of students who are reaching proficiency in each grade level. So out of context, this doesn't mean a lot just looking at it, so we have to do some comparison. So the first comparison, just looking year to year. So looking at each grade, comparing it to last year's data. So we have 2024, for example, 72% are proficiency. Last year, we had 79% reaching proficiency, so we declined seven points in third grade. Question is why? We'll look at some longitudinal data which could help us and we'll look at some data back to 2018, which will help us explain some of these changes. So overall, we're just looking at some of the.
That's interesting that that's, that there was a decline after we implemented the literacy. All that, it's like, well, well, that literacy stuff, I would expect to see it go up.
Right, so we'll have some hypothesis about that, let me look at some long-term data. You know, these are things we expect whenever we put energy in something. Generally, when we have a focus, the results do go up, so that is a curious dip. But we'll look, we'll go back to the previous years and see that. But this gives us a little bit of year to year. And again, there's going to be fluctuation year to year. It's one statistical element that I can't get from the state, which is, what is a general expected error from year to year that you would normally expect? Maybe seven points is within a margin of some sort, I don't know, but it is the question from year to year, like.
That is a really important question.
It is, because I don't really know with just our data, I can do some analysis on our data alone, but I really need statewide data to know if that seven-point drop is something that
Is significant.
is significant or not within the error of what these tests can measure.
But I guess, I guess from 2023 to 24, the cut scores the same or whatever?
They change them, we get new cut scores every year.
And could that be the reason?
Exactly, the state does their own analysis on statewide data, so there's a lot of mystery that goes into that that we can never get, you know, pull the curtain back and know exactly what the states do.
And it goes both ways too, because in fifth grade, there was a jump, right, the five.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's look at, this is interesting data. So this shows over the, those five years from 2018 to 2024. So for example, if we go into third grade, we do see that the 72 is sort of in line with how 18 and 19 were. These two years maybe are the anomaly, I don't know. And the question is why that jumped up at that time? Possibly, right? So I don't really know, but I try to look at trends over time, so over the long period, what's happening? Here is, sometimes we have ups and downs. And when, I've shown this every year, I show, once in a while, there's a blip and I can't explain exactly what's happened in that particular year, I don't know. This minus one is showing from 2018 to 24, this is the, over these five years, what is our change? So we've gone down just one point over the five years. Whereas if you look at fourth grade, we've gone up 12 points over that five-year period from a low of 68 here up to 80. So we seem, as I look at trends and patterns, so if we're looking at fourth grade, we seem to be hovering around the mid to high 70% proficiency there. What we do, just so our community understands, is that we look at those students who are not reaching proficiency and we provoke, we look at where their skill gap is. So is it around phonics or is it around phonemic awareness or is it around vocabulary? Or is it comprehension with informational texts? We drill down to that specific level with those kids who aren't meeting standards and provide services through a, either a push-in or a pull-out program so that by the time they get to eighth grade, we hope that we get the foundation strong and build up their proficiency.
So the support that we're giving them is, is being displayed in fourth and fifth grade?
Exactly, if you see that. And if you look at eighth grade, where kids land, so I'll look at some cohort, these are the same, these aren't cohort data, but I'll look at that on the next slide. So it'll show you the same students who travel from year to year.
That's, which is A, more important, but B, also not, because it's not the same test, right? There's not.
Exactly, it's a different test.
It's a different test, they're testing for different things, so it's not really even apples to apples, but it's at least a better look at.
But if our goal is to. Exactly, and if our goal is to get most students proficient by eighth grade, you look at eighth grade and that seems to be the trend of what's happening, particularly in the last couple of years, where we've had this in the 90% proficiency.
And the jump from seventh to eighth grade is so substantial. Is there something about the eighth grade test or test scores or cohort or a number of kids that take it that make a difference? Or is it?
ELA, that's not a change in the number of kids, all students take the same assessment in ELA.
Because the math is different.
Story and that'll show, those slides show an interesting story as well. We've always sort of been a little bit of a dip in seventh grade, which we haven't explained. Dwayne and I have looked at this over and over through assessment studies. I can't explain why that happens. When I talk to other districts who do, who look at their assessment data like this, everybody has their own grade that seems to be, you know, the one they can't explain. And it's not always seventh, like I was curious, the seventh grade the problem across the state and it's not. For another district, it might be sixth or fourth, you know, just, you know, these things that we can't quite explain. But we try to, we do do an analysis of the assessment data. We look at those items that students are missing most frequently and we do a map back to the standards for that grade level to see if our curriculum is actually teaching those standards. Making sure that those areas of weakness are, are looked at and studied and possibly rewrite in our curriculum. So it's those, that type of work that we're doing throughout the year. Well, let's look at the cohort data, so I'll explain this slide. Remember the 2020, 2020 and 2021 is missing, so that's why we have some gaps here. But if you look at this first row, these students in third grade, 79% of students reached proficiency. Those same students in fourth grade, it was 80% reached proficiency, that was a plus one. If you look at the next row, the third grade students in 2022 had 80, then 79, then 85. Same group of students, plus five over that three-year period and so on. What I look at in the cohort data is that this number's going up and we're getting by eighth grade, we're seeing an increase, which means that our intervention strategies and our NTSS process is working. There's definitely things to improve, but are we getting to, most students are reaching proficiency by eighth grade, so they're ready for high school and that to me is, is an indicator of success overall. Regardless of dips here and there throughout three through eight, three through seventh grade, hopefully by eighth grade, we build up the foundation is strong in, in literacy.
That's great, Tim.
So that's that overall slide. I look at a couple of subgroups here, well, one is let's go to New York State, how are we doing compared to New York State? We're always above New York and that's our goal. The red line here is showing the average across New York State. The blue bars are the proficiency levels, which I showed in the previous slides. And you can see, what I look at here is, one, are we performing well above New York State? And two, do we follow the same trends or when, where do we go counter to the trends? So you'll see, for example, from fourth to fifth, the state average goes down while. So you'll see, for example, from fourth to fifth, the state average goes down while we go up in terms of the proficiency. That's curious to me. So we're going counter the state trend. And I look for those types of patterns.
Did you see the state, is it mean or even?
Um, I believe it's a mean.
So yeah, the mean went up very marginally seventh to eighth grade.
Exactly. Yeah, yep. Where we went up a lot. And then you look from third to eighth and compare to our third to eighth, which is interesting as well. Which means, you know, we're having a value added to our intervention process and statewide. And I've tried to look at it through that lens of value added. Are we adding value based on a Byron House education that bucks the trend of New York State or other regional districts? I look at our students with disabilities. Now, what I highlight, I put an N here because I think it's important to know these are small numbers. So it just takes a few students to really change that percentage. So that's why I, I, this is all three through five. I group them together, cause if I was to tease that out, you have about twelve students per grade and it's too small and the numbers don't mean a lot. But again, I look for trends. Are we, are we coordinating? This has been a deliberate effort to coordinate the local, our general education curriculum with the self-contained classes. So that we're working hard to keep those students on a grade level the best that we can. So that's work we've been doing for quite a while. And this would show me if this trend continues, that we're having some effort in that. We'll look at six through eight. We did go down this year, but again, thirty-seven students. So it just takes, what, a ten percent jump would be three or four students would jump us up ten percent. That would be equal to last year. So it's, very few students there could make the difference. And that could be a bad day of testing. It just could be that particular cohort. There's a lot of other reasons. Again, what I do is look at trends over time that we are improving in terms of more students with disabilities reaching proficiency. That's the ELA data. So I'll jump into math unless there's more questions about ELA.
I think the only question, you know, that you was mentioning earlier is just to do what we can to sort of look at that third grade ELA score.
Yeah, we're already getting under the hood with that, to why that's happening there, cause we have, we are now entering our third year of focusing on literacy. Still a lot of work to do with aligning our literacy curriculum. You'll hear more about that next month. We're gonna dive deep into our K-five curriculum work, particularly literacy. We'll be joined by the principals in Mayhem. So we can really explore a little more of what we're doing to understand and make sure there's continuity in our curriculum.
Well, it's be interesting to see how that particular cohort does.
Exactly. We'll get it over time. Alright. This is Tia who wants to learn math. So we're gonna see if, how we're doing with, with math with Tia. So math, these are the proficiency levels in math. Again, doesn't make a lot of sense out of context. So comparing to last year, again, we had a drop in third grade. I wonder if it's a cohort thing because they, it seems similar to what the drop was in literacy. So to me, that starts the ring. Maybe this cohort just is starting off lower. And remember, in literacy, we did have some low percentages in the past and we got those kids caught up. So I assume we will. It just means more work and more effort. Let's look at the five-year comparison. So again, it looks like in third grade, we've been hovering around mid to low eighties. So we seen back there, last year seemed to be a little bit of an anomaly. That seemed to be the blip last year and now we're sort of equalizing again, to use that term. Fourth grade, we seem to have this trend of getting higher in the high eighties, low nineties from these two other years. So again, I'll be curious if we can maintain that type of level there or if that's just these particular cohorts. Fifth grade, we're seeing an increase in the last three years here from the previous years. Sixth grade has always been really strong. But we've had some recently, last year and the year before, some really strong years. Seventh grade, again, the last two years have been strong. And then eighth grade, we're having this blip here, which is a big jump, which I can't fully explain, except that we do really great work in our sixth, seventh and eighth grade math teachers working today.
Yeah, if you look at two thousand twenty-four, I mean, they're fourth grade up. They're all like unbelievable.
Yeah, so we've had some really strong performance there. So let's look at cohort, at cohort data. Again, the cohort data is looking in terms of positives from that overall change from the beginning to the end. And seeing these high scores with, if our goal is in eighth, and this algebra group is the ninth grade algebra, that's the same cohort. So I'm able to really look at that cohort. One hundred percent of these students in algebra reaching proficiency. Eighth grade, ninety-six, those are students who are not in that honors algebra class. So to have this number is really extraordinary. And in third grade, they started at eighty-two. And so we did see that those twelve, the eighteen percent of students who were below proficiency, that we got down to four percent. So that's the type of thing we're looking at in the data that we can dive deeper into more curricular alignment and those types of questions.
Do we know that they've actually come up to proficiency as opposed to, I don't know, moving out of district? So they're no, no longer being calculated?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I'm not looking at the, like how many students we have going out of that cohort over time. That would be interesting data to look at. But these are the students we have at the end.
We really have many that.
A lot. I think we'd have to look at where our jumps are if kids leave.
For a couple of years, like in middle school year, but we're not seeing them anymore.
Yeah, sometimes we have a group that might leave, but I don't know the numbers that are in and out. We might gain some students as well that move to the district. Then we'll look at our state data. Comparison, you know, again, going with the trend most of the time, except here, the state drops significantly from seventh to eighth and we go up significantly. I mean, this difference is phenomenal to me. I'm curious about that. But I think different districts have different ways they accelerate students in eighth grade. So there's a big change in eighth grade that happens statewide because it's a local decision on that in terms of what students.
Sad state of affairs. Forty-one percent of kids in New York State are reaching math proficiency.
And it declines from third grade. To me, if I were in charge of the curriculum statewide, I would be wondering a lot.
You're asking a big question.
Yeah. It's like, what is the support we're, we're putting in place for students who aren't meeting benchmarks? And obviously, something's not going right here with this way. So that would concern me.
So our math scores are very strong.
They're very strong.
I wonder how we compare to other states?
Yeah, it's hard to.
Not overly, not too well.
Well, it's not the same test, so.
You look, you have to look at the, it's the NAEP, right? The NAEP test that goes across states and New York is not, not.
We do worse than.
Well, I mean, we're not hot, we're not on the highest echelon. We're not in the lowest either. It probably depends on the year and the subject, but kind of not, not as impressive as you would think.
Yeah.
Our state report card gives a NAEP score, so I could look that up if I, if I know about that.
Massachusetts originally.
This is our, at Wampus, our three through five, students with disabilities. Again, phenomenal results here showing that trend. And we've had some real rigorous work at our elementary grades in aligning the special class with the gen ed curriculum. That's been deliberate work and I'm believing that this could be part of that explanation. As well as again, small numbers, small cohort of students.
Are these numbers, these numbers are also included in the totals?
Yes, they're included in the, in all the other data. I just teased out that, this cohort.
Yeah, no, that's interesting.
And then this is the middle school, which is, to me, these last two years, it's phenomenal work. And I know Kim Lappel has put a lot of energy into the way they support students who are struggling. And particularly the, looking at the special class as well and making sure those kids have someone who knows math working with them. It's very important at the middle school level.
Yeah, that's beyond the margin there. That's, that's, that's a big increase.
And then science. Here's our young scientists. Do notice that they are wearing their safety goggles.
And their lap.
And their smokes, yeah. It's so cute.
That's great. We just need to put a pen in there. So we'll look at science. Let's recall that last year was the first administration of new science tests in fifth grade and eighth grade. So these are aligned to the new standards. They're much more rigorous. It's a whole paradigm shift in science. So we were curious how the results were. We've always done well in our science assessments when it was in fourth and eighth grade. So this is the science. Again, the same performance levels. We have seventy-six percent reaching proficiency, a high number in threes and fours. My experience shows with all new assessments, we always sort of see a lower result in, in, in the fours than we're used to. And over time, that goes up. And you'll see that in some of the region's data that I show you. I expect this to change, shift more of those threes up to fours and hopefully more students reaching proficiency as we understand the expectations of the new standards and how they're being assessed as we learn those assessments. In eighth grade, very similar results in eighth grade. So I have nothing to compare to yet, except going into the state data, the state level's at thirty-five and thirty-four percent. So we're more than double the state proficiency level, which is, at least to me, indicates we're in line with where we should be on this first assessment of the test. I think those proficiencies levels are gonna go up, particularly as we explore a new science curriculum, which we're looking at. We're in our second year of piloting. I'll talk about that in a moment. But this is a good indication to me that where we should be and that we at least did okay relatively speaking. And then we'll go into the region's exams. These are some high school students in our robotics class. Again, we have on our new assessments, we have five performance levels. The old assessments will still have four, but they're all transitioning to five levels. Three, four, five is considered proficient. It's partially meaning, but it's still a sort of a passing score. I just highlight three and four because that's, you'll notice across here, some of the scaled scores are different. It just, but the state, the way they do their standards alignment falls into these performance levels. So this is English. This is looking at last year's. Ninety-nine percent reaching proficiency is eighty-eight. It was down one. And the average is down two points from last, from twenty, oops, twenty twenty-three. But I don't have comparison data yet, cause this, these scores are not officially released yet from the state. They still are doing their. All the districts have to confirm their data and then they'll officially release them in a couple of months and release it publicly. I am allowed to talk about it. They do have released them early, cause they know we've been complaining, we've been getting the data so late. And this is.
But they're on their report cards already.
Yes, they have them. They're, they're releasing the parent reports, they're releasing the data, but it's not official yet. There's a, a process the state has to go through to confirm all the results with every district.
But it doesn't say level five, it doesn't say like level five. I, you know, they put a number on the report card. They, they didn't.
It gives the scaled score.
What? It gave, yeah, it gives the scaled score.
We report scaled scores.
But it doesn't show on the report card what a level five, what a level four, what a level three is. I wonder if that's something we should consider.
Right. Showing that on the.
Showing that being.
What the scaled score is.
Right, because an eighty-five, you know, to a college doesn't look like a hundred and yet they're all showing that it's exceeding expectations. So just my.
If I'm a parent and I'm seeing a level five, I'm kind of thinking they're like ninety to a hundred, right?
That's values. Right, so I, no, but it, it's still values. It's saying like across all of New York, it's, you know, so I think it could be helpful.
Yeah, what's confusing about region's exam, this is just a scale score. It's no different than if you go back to the three through eight. They just use a different scaling system. They use it up to six hundred or five hundred and eighty-two or something. They could have made these numbers anything. They did it on the hundred-point scale. When I, I actually talked to the assistant commissioners of assessment, the office of assessment a couple of years ago and was really challenging them on some of these things. When they did the five performance levels, there was a decision to do it, to keep the hundred-point scale. Because teachers like that in terms of grades. Although they don't correlate with grades and the state doesn't recommend you use grades on these assessments. So I really pushed back on that. I wish they didn't use a hundred-point scale, cause I think it's confusing. So that eighty-five to a hundred is a level five, meaning if you have a hundred or an eighty-five, that's statistically the same measure of benchmark. It's hard to discriminate to that level on these types of tests.
So when you have an AP score, you don't get your scale score?
Exactly.
So I'm thinking, wouldn't it be better for Byram, wouldn't it look better for our students to put five?
Just level five?
Right.
I would love to do that, actually. I think it's an interesting idea.
I don't know if it's something that, I don't know if that's something that we can do, but I just think it could, it could be more supportive of our students because.
I have to think about the implications of that.
It's an arbit, eighty-five to a hundred is an arbitrary.
It is. It could have been.
You got it saying you're, you're well above proficiency.
That could have been three forty-two to four nineteen. It's, it's just a, a scale measure.
It's just something to consider going forward.
Yeah, yeah. Cause it is a confusing piece and I still, I have conversations with teachers about the scale and how that doesn't equate to grades. You know, a ninety to a hundred isn't an A on this. It's eighty-five to a hundred is the same, according to the state's way they standardize the assessment.
You're saying that that's above level, well above level.
Yeah, it's their norming process that they use. So it's a really interesting dilemma. So it's something we, we grapple with over time. If we go to math, if I can explain this chart, this is the percent of all students who took the algebra assessment last year. So this is our results, ninety-eight percent proficient and this is the, sort of the difference in those first, in those top three levels. This includes eighth grade, ninth grade and students who take an expanded algebra in tenth and eleventh grade. Then we divide it out into the middle school, hundred percent of students at level five in our middle school, which is what we would expect. That is an honors algebra class. And then this is the ninth grade students only. So teased out of this data, I didn't include those in tenth and eleventh grade. It's a small number of students. But this is the, the spacing there. And notice we were up five points in that mastery level of level five here. And a few percentage points up on the average of ninth grade students. And if you look at the ranking, we were ranked number one in the region for levels four and five. And I expect when all the data is released statewide, we'll be able to do this comparison to last for this cohort of students in terms of ranking. We look at the science assessments. We have increased, these are the old assessments. Starting this year, we're going to see at the end of June, we'll have a new assessment in earth science and a new assessment in living environment. So those will be new aligned to the new standards. It'll have the five performance levels there. But you see again, sustaining our excellent results and even going up a little bit on this last.
And you think the chemistry, the reason for chemistry is still that we have more kids in chemistry than most districts do?
Yes, yep. Yeah, we, we don't do a non-regents chemistry where a lot of districts do that. Kids take chemistry, they go into a regent's level course. So we have a wide range and most of our students take chemistry. So that's why this might be a little lower. It's still a really great score for our students overall, but we're trying to get as many students, we saw ninety-two percent reaching proficiency. And that is a stretch for some of our kids, but that's why you see more in this range than you do in the other sciences. And global history. So US history was the first assessment last year, so that, or the second assessment, second administration. You see this big jump of seven points in level five. I usually expect that in the first few iterations of the new assessment as we learn the details of how the new standards are being assessed. And the same thing here, this is the third administration of global history, up eight points in that mastery. We're still seeing great results here and we wanna see more students at levels four and five. And we have fairly high averages there as well. So that's the state assessment data. I always like to show just a few other metrics in there. I have two slides and then I'll give you a summary of what we're doing next, over the next couple of meetings. So AP results, we've been tracking the percent of students scoring level three or better. You can see down here, three hundred fifty-one students took exams, at least one AP exam last year and a total of seven hundred ninety-three exams. So this is ninety-three percent of our students who took exams received a ninety-three. Ninety-three percent received a, a score of three or better. And you can see that's pretty high. This was the pandemic year and the year after the pandemic, which dipped, but we're basically went back up to our normal levels shortly thereafter. Which gives me an indication, all this data, when you look at our data post-pandemic and when I read articles about that pandemic dip and the learning loss.
Learning loss.
Oh, no question.
I don't see that in our data anywhere.
Yeah, no question.
Nowhere in our data last year, that sustained learning loss from year to year. I think that speaks to the fact that we had K through six in every day. We had kids in every other day in that first year of the pandemic. And we worked really hard and put a lot of energy into planning how we were gonna teach students during the pandemic. And I think it's showing in our results that we haven't seen that learning loss. I think there was a few years of the social emotional piece. We've seen longer than, I think, the academic piece overall, from my analysis.
Do you include senior AP, seniors who are taking APs in this? Because I know.
This is all students.
As all students.
Yeah, so it's impressive. It's really impressive.
That is a value practice.
That's juniors, seniors, sophomores, yeah.
I wonder if you take the seniors out?
It's junior.
How high is it?
I, I'm just wondering.
Well, we have some who, I mean, senior, you have some seniors who don't take it in earnest and some who do in earnest, just like their.
I know, I know.
It's all very.
Make it in earnest.
You know, girl experienced senior.
But I just, I know I've heard others.
Right, the Star Spangled Banner.
It does vary and we, we can get detailed data on each exam and all that's given to the chairs who then work with their teachers on it and we look at that data. So we go granular with this data. I'm just showing big picture here. But again, to show the work that's happening in the school buildings, we are analyzing that data with teachers so that they could see how they can improve their curriculum. And then I'd love to show this as a metric. This is our percent of students who get accepted into tier one and tier two colleges. This is a particular rating system on a six-level rating system by Barren's. And there's about eleven percent of colleges are ranked tier one and two. And we have eighty-nine percent of our students accepted into eleven percent of the top colleges. And I like to show this over time to show the value added over time and how we have occasion, continuous improvement to make sure more of our students are getting into the best colleges in the country. And this data just confirms that for us.
And also guidance has been incredible with introducing new schools to our students.
It's amazing. That was a real mission of Miss Wilson.
They've really done a great job. I did.
Yeah, we'll have Christina Wilson join us at some point at a meeting. We'll talk more about college data. So thanks for that note. So let me show our curricular priorities, our fifth graders going back to school. Went in depth at the August board meeting. For anyone in the community who wants to go listen to that presentation, I'm, I'm just showing this as sort of our steps that we're engaged in now. I won't go in detail. I'm, I'm just showing this as sort of our steps that we're engaged in now, I won't go in detail on it. But this does, if you look here, you see literacy throughout this and we're continuing that K five focus on literacy and our MTSS, which is the process we use to make sure we're catching kids who need that extra academic support. And I had the same for high school, which I went into detail last meeting. But this sort of shows us what, what we're working on that this year in terms of our four-phase process of our curriculum review. And then what's coming up? So we had Melissa and Jen Sporelli here talking about international travel. In October is our usual meeting where we go into depth on our administrative goals and you have a copy in advance. So if you want to study this over the next month and ask some tough questions of our administrators, you have our goals for the year and I'll go through that goal process in October. We are going to shift it a little and just bring in a subset of the whole administrative team so we can go a little deeper. I think it's a great way to bring everyone in, but we don't get time to go deep. So we're going to focus it this year and go a little deeper and I'll show that on my next slide. We always do state of department where we can go even deeper with academic departments. Last year you heard from Ms. Layden, Dr. Layden in social studies and Ms. Pellegrino in math. So this year, Melissa will be back in November to talk about the world language department and we can go deep into her goals and her work. And also in February, we'll bring Ms. Kay in to talk about science. And she'll be on the end of a science visit from our tri-state consortium colleagues who are coming in to, to help us as critical friends to improve. So next month, this is what next month will look like, I'm very excited to continue our story of data. So we're going to look at more data. And I've talked for the last decade about the story of student performance and how we can show and measure those things we value. And Ms. Lappel and Mr. Rincona have worked really hard with the middle school teachers and with our chairs to continue our assessment reports. So remember, Dr. Powderly started doing assessment reports in about nineteen ninety-eight, I believe. I did them as a chair, Jen did them as a chair. And Ms. Lappel took a pause on it for a few years and wanted to rethink the data reports. Because we were only really looking at state test data. So we wanted to look at other pieces of data since we know what our state data were. We've been fairly good and we got our system up to a, a really high level. What about the other things we value and how do we measure that? So you're going to see a summary of some documents and we're going to share all of the, the chairs and directors' assessment reports with you. But we're going to summarize them for you in October and it's really interesting exploration. So I'm excited about that. And we're also been asking the question of how do we know we're making an impact with our global scholars students? So in a conversation with Dr. Layden, Ms. Stahl and Mr. Smith, we were sitting around talking about nonprofit organizations and how they show their impact on the work they're doing. And then the idea came, well, can we do a similar impact report in global scholars? And so Dr. Layden worked to think of a way we can quantify the impact of the global scholars program. So she's going to present that report to you next month, very excited about that. And then we'll also be bringing in our principals, K five and Megan McCauley, our curriculum chairperson, to talk about how we use data to inform our curricular decisions and the work we're doing around literacy and MTSS, K five. And we'll get a chance to dive deep into the work there. So next month will be a little different, but I think we can go deeper instead of just broader with all the academic chairs. So we're going to shift that up a little bit.
Yeah, it looks phenomenal, yeah.
So we're really excited about continuing the discussion around data, but not just state tests or standardized data, looking more on the other measures. And this is last year's graduating class, we missed them already, so there they are, the class of twenty twenty-four.
Dewey Mia?
Yes.
Do this. Making you cry, do see yours, wait till Thanksgiving.
Family weekend this weekend.
Oh, that's good.
Nice.
That's exciting.
Thank you so much, Tim.
Thank you.
That was fantastic.
I'm very, 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 very in-depth.
All right, next, eleven point two, NISBA annual meeting. Is this where we authorize Lori Kenner as our NISBA delegate to vote? On behalf, is this, we have to?
Yes, we can.
Is there any discussion to be had or?
Who you pick.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori. Did you do this last year?
Yes, she did.
You're very welcome.
In perpetuity?
Yeah.
I get to choose next year who gets the tour.
That's right.
So, I'm not, with much gratitude.
Well, he, all of a sudden, he's like best friend.
Can we please have a motion to authorize Lori Kenner to vote on behalf of our district at the NISBA meeting?
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
And anyone who has any questions is welcome to reach out to me.
Thank you, Lori.
But I, I, we have a plan of having, have a, so I'll tomorrow.
Thank you, Lori. Next, eleven point three, textbook adoption.
Purposeful people.
Purposeful people, back to Tim and Gina.
Very excited. So we have spoken to you over the past three years about our character education and social emotional learning curriculum at the elementary schools. Mr. Mack, principal of Wampus, and Ms. Annie Schmidt, who is our guidance counselor, and Abby Fitzgerald, guidance counselor at Comen Hill, have presented on this work and the impact of it. So we had a curriculum conversation last year or two years ago, I can't remember the date. Might have been two years ago where they came and presented on this character education pilot. So we've been piloting this at Wampus and Comen Hill for the last three years. So after a three-year study, we want to recommend the adoption of Purposeful People, which is published by Character Strong. So we're going to go into this, just give you a quick summary, I'll remind you of the work. You also have in your packet the textbook adoption form and you can see some of the details and certainly if you have any questions about what's on that form. Gina let us study of various programs and then we chose this to pilot and we've been really, really pleased. So I'll just give you a few slides on it. For one, why we're doing it, we really believe that this program, we've talked a lot and we've done a lot of research, particularly with our site-based teams, about the link between character principles, character education skills, social emotional learning and students' academic performance. And we know that they are linked, that in order to achieve your potential, you need to have certain skills and, and be developing certain character education skills and particular social emotional learning strategies that it's really linked together. We studied that in depth when we did our study of character education last year, over the past couple of years through our site-based team. You might remember that we created our new character education principles last year. I shared this document, we have all this on our website. We also have a lot of the research behind character traits and academic success linked on our website. So we did a whole research dive into that. Also, we like the, character education is, we want, we want continuity from kindergarten through fifth grade. And so that the skills that students are learning about build on each other and that we're being very deliberate about the types of skills we're building and that we're sending off to our middle school. So that's all been very deliberate. And strengths of this particular curriculum is that there's very clear learning outcomes with the lessons. So that was one thing we liked about this program. It has and allows for flexible implementation. You can do this every day with students and with whole class. You can do it in small groups, you can do it on a weekly basis, monthly basis. There's a lot of various templates curriculally that allow for flexibility. And we found that flexibility to be really helpful because we do it in different, we use it in different ways. And then we also found that the activities are age-appropriate and allow for students to practice the character traits. And we'll see some examples from Gina in a moment. We also like that it's aligned to the New York State social emotional learning benchmarks. They put that out a few years ago and we sort of did a map between Character Strong, Purposeful People and those state standards to make sure that there was alignment. And these are the traits, Gina.
So just before I, I talk briefly, I just want to, I would be remiss to not include Dave Mack in the facilitation of that study. He and I did that work together and he was certainly with his background, very instrumental in that work. So I just wanted to give him a, a little shout out there. But just as Tim was saying, I think when we look at the relatability of this kind of curriculum, not only do we see our counselors doing this during exploratory periods or in the classroom, but also teachers can access it, it's, like I said, it's very relatable, it's constantly being updated on the website. You can pull, you know, a book that you might suggest to a parent to read at home or you might, if you're perhaps visiting Lisa Palmer in the assistant principal's office, maybe we pull something from, from there to help in the repair of whatever behavior might have been undesirable at that time. So again, many, many of our, our personnel are using this curriculum throughout the school, so that's been very helpful. So here are the nine character traits, all which fall under either be kind, be strong, or be well. And I just wanted to share a couple of applications in the fifth grade and talking with Annie Schmidt. So trying to highlight the, the character trait of perseverance in grade five, it was done through goal setting. So here's a very clear and friendly framework, if you will, where a student would identify one or two personal and or community goals that they would want to work on. And then that next box, it's a little hard to see on that slide, but those are your action steps. But also being very realistic in that while we have plans to meet a goal, we also may have some hiccups or obstacles along the way. And so what can I do if this, then I can ask for help, then I can go to extra help, whatever it might be. So it's also encouraging that flexible thinking and problem solving. So you, you see there's a lot of pieces that you're getting to just through one activity. And so this was just a, an example of a grade five activity.
Yeah, goal setting aligns to things like perseverance, you know, and that resilience. And it helps with those types of character strength, character traits that are important for academic, you know, translation to the academic content areas.
Just one more slide, this is just a little more thing. And then just for our, for our third graders, the character trait that they were getting to was respect. So what does it look like, how, how can I be respectful to my peers, to myself? And so an activity which also incorporated mathematical concepts as well and measurement was, you know, ingredients. I'll just read it aloud for the audience, a spoon, what is my, her, probably could say it better here. A spoon of compliments, a gallon of kindness, a pint of manners, a container of listening, an ounce of respect, and a sprinkle of responsibility. And when you go.
Only a sprinkle, fifth graders, no gallon.
This is their grade, this is their grade, yeah, their grade. And then in order to put that together, to wind up with respect, you'll put the listening white chocolate in the fridge and put the grateful gummy bears and kindness strawberries for their toppings. So very sweet, but again, really incorporating not only academic concepts, but trying to again get to that character trait of respect, so.
These skills will continue year to year, so they'll just, it'll get more sophisticated, types of activities, but the same thing over and over.
Very cute.
And kindness with these types of character traits around respect.
Do they have badges, like digital badges that they can earn through this program?
I don't know if this program, does it have it, do you?
I don't know if they have digital badges. I know that Dave and Lisa, especially at Wampus, have the cards, the Wampus cards, that they'll catch them doing something and they'll give them a, a card and they work that through extra recess and so forth.
Right. So at Wampus, the way it's implemented is all third grade students receive the curriculum through encore. So it's an encore cycle that our counselor goes into, teaches, and then it's a push-in into fourth and fifth grade. She'll go in on a regular basis to every class in fourth and fifth grade. And then also sometimes teachers might be dealing with a particular issue. They'll consult with Annie and then she'll go in and do particular lessons based on any needs of that particular group in the classroom. And then in first and second grade, it's also a push-in. Abby Fitzgerald, our counselor, goes in the classrooms and teaches lessons in first and second grade. We have brought Purposeful People to kindergarten, we use a different program there. And right now, we've done, we've been doing a lot of curriculum work in kindergarten, so we haven't had the opportunity to think if this would be better or not, but it does align. So right now, we're just keeping kindergarten curriculum and we may in the future want to expand it down to kindergarten.
Is Kelso still a part of the, Kelso's choice.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Kelso is still there.
You can never forget Kelso. Oh, I pulled that out right off.
So we are strongly recommending this curriculum for adoption to the board after a three-year deep study of it and seeing it in action. We are very confident this aligns with our character of principles, aligns with our mission as a district. It also feels it's aligning with our leadership initiative as well.
Great, great, thank you, both of you. With that, can I please have a motion to approve the adoption of Purposeful People?
Second.
All in favor?
Would we possibly be able to see it in action when we visit the schools this year? That probably could.
Especially with third grade, you can see it in encore or you can see if she's pushing in during.
Depends the time to get out.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Obviously, we want to, it just would be nice to see it now.
Onto staff reports, Dr. Lammy, it's all you.
Yes. Thank you.
This or your other one? Are you doing this one report or?
Oh, yeah, I'm going to do life's learning action first. All right, so full disclosure, Kelly, who's not here tonight, put this presentation together, was supposed to give it, but I'm going to give it in his stead.
You can do it, Jen.
Kelly, we hope you feel better. All right, so as you know, we had phase one for the learning commons, pre-construction conditions for the lecture hall. You remember what that looked like, that's not there anymore, folks.
This is not there.
This is not there anymore. This is not there anymore. So our construction update, you will see that the lecture hall was demolished. And. We are starting here to do the extended layers as opposed to the single lane seats that we had in the past and some sheet rock, now you can see these are forming a little bit better. And some painting and now look at the ceiling that's going in, some of the light fixtures are coming together now.
Nice blue.
Oh, it is, that was a board blue. It's board blue, yes, I think it looks great. It's common, very common, yeah, really nice. And we are expecting within the next probably four to five weeks for, it's going to be finished before then, but it will be furnished and ready to go for our kids to be using the lecture hall, which is so nice.
That's so fast.
Yeah, it's awesome.
They really pop, they look fantastic, the carpet is going to look great in there too.
It's awesome.
And now we have the learning commons area, this is the library, pre-construction conditions, not there anymore, folks, not there either, not there. And this is the demolition work. We only hit one snag in the, two snags in the demolition work. One is that we have two drainage pipes that are coming down from the roof that are actually in the space where we are putting the openings to go into there. So we're doing one change order to move those pipes, but we're still staying within budget. The other is asbestos abatement outside. We did have asbestos abatement in the hallway inside, that took place over the summer. But there is asbestos abatement outside that's going to take place over Columbus Day weekend. It is outside, so it's not going to impact anything inside the school, but we will post signs for ten days prior as we are supposed to. And here's where they're taking out all of that and when you finally get a look at it, it is a vast space.
Huge, it's amazing.
It's just like a warehouse, yeah.
I will say that the students do miss the library, which was nice to hear.
Ah, it is nice to hear, yeah.
Is that, this is ceiling?
This is the, this is.
Yeah, the ceiling, that makes a big difference when the ceiling is, when those panels are gone.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
That's such a reach.
These are the two ceiling drains, there are two of them that are coming down that are going to be removed.
Are we suffering them? Are we suffering them?
No, we're not, we're moving them. And then you will see that right now, we are in the fall of twenty twenty-four, construction during the school year taking place and we are right on time. We anticipated that we would have the learning commons project closeout in the spring of twenty twenty-five, but we know it's going to be more like the winter of twenty twenty-five. Very good. And special thanks to Kelly, too bad he couldn't be here to present this because he is on this project with John Baxter every single day. They are doing a phenomenal job. And the companies that we, that wound up winning these bids for this are also doing a phenomenal job. And that is it for that. And then my next thing, my next trick is going to be my student highlights. We have quite a bit. So we have senior Casey Goldstein among the top in New York Times open letter contest. We had talked about this, I think, over the summer, right, when we learned? This is, this is pretty amazing. She did, dear New York State senators, could you please repeat that, shedding light on critical challenges families face in obtaining hearing aids for children in New York State? She was chosen, the nine, sorry, I know that. Pete was chosen out of eight thousand sixty-five entries, right? So there are nine, out of nine, right? That's amazing.
Great.
Our national merit semifinal. Although we have, Olivia Long is not pictured here, congratulations Zoe Harris, Andrew Levy, Olivia Long not pictured, Serena Mech and Aaron Stein, named semifinalists, National Merit Scholarship Program. And now they are competing for nearly seven thousand scholarships, twenty-six million dollars. They are in the top one percent of high school seniors.
Amazing.
One point five, one point three million entrance, it's pretty amazing. I think their smiles are pretty genuine. We also have a congratulations, I'm sorry, Larry's not here. Congratulations to our senior Ashley Stangles. Congratulations to our senior Ashley Stengels. She had the Bedford and New Canaan magazines 18 under 18 distinction, which is pretty amazing. If you, there is a full article that is attached, but basically it's talking all about her efforts. She was selected by, you know, she did some work in her Global Scholars program. She did a lot of work with the American Library Association to put together an opportunity for kids to voice their concerns about banned books. She's, she's been, she had a lunch and learn. We did the lunch and learn last year together. Went to the high school, were invited to the lunch and learn. And she had people from the national, the American Library Association who were zooming into this meeting to have a discussion with her about banned books. I mean, we just really has done so much. So congratulations, Ashley. And Isabella Vasquez, wow. Speech and debate, finished second in original oratory at the National Speech and Debate Association's kickoff. And her achievement earns her a bid in the spring's tournament of champions. There's nothing like better than tournament of champions. This is awesome. This is a junior. Evan Reese selected for NISBA All-State Mixed Chorus. By the way, Evan is a, was, he was chosen from thousands of students to do this. He got perfect scores on the solo. But he's a singer, a cellist, an actor. I mean, you'll, you'll see him all over the high school. Congratulations, Evan. And music students chosen to participate in the all, area all-state honors ensembles. Students will do two evening rehearsals in October in New Rochelle High School. This is based on their scores from last year. And good luck to everyone who's involved. These are the students who are involved. It's pretty amazing. Area all-state honors. Tyler Mariscot, wow, how great. What a wonderful student, wonderful athlete, and so humble. Varsity football named Con Ed Player of the Week. He was voted Low-Hud Player of the Week for his performance in the game against Putt Valley on Saturday, two Saturdays ago. Low-Hud highlighted his 80 receiving yards with a touchdown reception, 37 rushing yards with another touchdown, two two-point conversions from the Wildcat formation, whatever that is, I'm not sure. I got it up until then, and a 46-yard fumble recovery touchdown. But pretty, pretty amazing interplay. He's such a great player.
It was all in one game?
No, 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 no. And Harrison Boyd, Low-Hud Player of the Week, varsity soccer. Highlighted his score, he scored twice, giving the Bobcats a 2-1 win over another Class A contender, Somers, in our season opener. Congratulations. This is a lot to have like these.
It's already like two and a half weeks in.
You barely have woken up, right? These kids are already getting Low-Hud players. And go Bobcats. Last things I'd like to note, first of all, thank you so much to the community. Anyone who's called us requesting the calendar, we put so much time and energy into that calendar. We received so many complaints in the past that we were sending the calendar to every home in the community and that it was a waste of taxpayer money, which did make us cry because we take so much pride in the calendar. But we did listen to the community. We did not mail the calendar to 2,800 households. We only mailed it to people who have students in the schools right now. Out of the 2,800 households we did not mail to, we've had about less than 60 now people who have called or come to receive a calendar. So we are going to be creating a list and we are happy to mail you a calendar if you would like one. We are happy to have you come here and visit us and say hello and pick one up. But knowing that there were 2,800 that would have been mailed out and 60 that were requested gave some credence to the people who had complained to us. So thank you for, thank you for people talking to us.
And it's always, it's so, it's always available online. It's digitally available. You can stream it here.
But people definitely like it, I know, right? Like they love, they like that physical calendar.
So Jen, all they need to do is call, right? And they call the district office if they want one.
They can just call. Yep. We're happy to do that. Happy to get you one right away. I wanna highlight that we have our homecoming games coming up. Really excited for homecoming. On Monday, the 23rd of September, we'll have our traveling pep rally. Tuesday, girls varsity soccer versus Eastchester and girls JV tennis versus Rynek. 4:30, boys JV, sorry, Wednesday, boys JV soccer against Ry at 4:30. And 7 o'clock, varsity field hockey versus Pelham. We have Thursday, a 4:30 varsity volleyball versus Ry, 4:30 varsity tennis versus Harrison. We're gonna find ourselves walking back and forth. 6 o'clock, JV volleyball versus Ry, 6:30 varsity soccer versus Valhalla. Friday night, Lights will be 6:30 varsity football versus Bronxville. And Saturday, 6 o'clock, varsity boys soccer versus Westlake. Be there, Oukie Square. I will be there with my Bobcat gear. All right, very exciting.
Thank you, Jen. Sure. Turn it over to you, Tim.
No, no additional reports. I think I've spoken enough.
Never did.
Never enough, Tim.
Never enough.
Okay, any communications to the board? Seeing and hearing none. We're gonna skip the July 9th approval because without Larry, we don't have four members who are here. We'll have to do that next week.
I just wanted to make board reports quickly. I mean, I don't have much, but very quickly.
Oh, sorry, yeah, board, board reports, yeah.
Anybody else before I go?
Yeah.
Yeah, you go first, Mel.
PTSA had its first exec meeting this week. And a really nice new group of, of.
People with young kids.
Well-attended. Enthusiastic. It was great. It was a really good meeting. They've got a lot of stuff going on. And they're really happy to have our support and participation in those meetings, which is always nice to hear.
And I, I wanna thank the PTSA, too. I know that they spend a lot of time and effort selling spirit wear. But these little tiny five-year-olds feel like they're Bobcats. Like they are, yeah, they are really spreading Byram pride throughout the district through that. So thank you so much for those efforts and everything you're doing with class parents. I mean, there is a lot going on. I went to a class parent meeting at Coleman Hill and there had to be 50 people in there, PTSA class parents, yeah.
Also, thank you, the PTSA, when the, when the teachers came back to school.
Yes.
They really did a great job, not only with the breakfast, but they offered spirit wear at a discounted price. And the teachers were so excited to show their Bobcat pride, so it was a great idea.
I mean, really, like Dave Mack does a whole.
Bobcat Fridays every Friday.
Every Friday, right? The teachers wear their Bobcat wear. It's so cute.
Yep, middle school hashtag kindness. They wear their shirts. I mean, we have like, we have a lot of good spirit going on. That's it for me.
And then I'll just quickly say last night, we had, Jen and I were part of a discussion. There was a regional discussion on advocacy. I think it was one of the best-attended meetings I've seen in a long time. I mean, most of the districts that, you know, that we work with were there. And then some that we haven't worked with in a while were there, too. So it was really a good showing and a lot of issues that have regional alignment around them. Some issues, there are differences of opinion, but it's always good to have that forum and debate some of these issues. The other two things just to watch out for if you're interested is that the School Board Association locally, Westside, is gonna have these financial workshops. So different topics around school finance and they're easy, they're, I think during lunch and they're about an hour and they're Zoom. So if you're interested, feel free to sign up. And then the convention this year from the State Association is in New York City. So it's also a lot easier than when it's upstate. So if you're interested in that, I'm gonna try to kind of, of course.
Does that run through every year, upstate?
It does, although this year and next year it's in New York City.
Are you the keynote speaker?
Well.
Well, I'll be there, yeah.
I'm, I'm not, I, I went to the pre, at the pre-convention workshop on Sunday, I am.
That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ben.
Thank you. I have to do the presentation.
What, what did you grant?
I bet I'm gonna see it.
Oh, are you?
Tell us something.
No, I mean, do it to me.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I probably, it's on Sunday. It's, no, it's like October, oh, I forget what the date is now, but it's like mid-October, 20 something. Yeah. So there's a pre-convention on Sunday and then the main convention on Monday.
Great.
We know where we'll be that Sunday.
We're pretty lucky to have you.
We are.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you for all your work.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Any other board reports? Okay, we already did communications. Let's go to approval of the board minutes and jump to the July 30th, 2024 meeting. Let's see who can. So Scott and Melissa, you were not there. So we have four. For the, for Lori and Mia and Petri and myself, a motion to.
I hear that. Oh, Lori's.
Lori's right there. Motion to, motion.
It's late.
It's getting.
What we see. Amazing. That was amazing. A motion to approve July 30th, 2024. All those in favor?
Make sure you put that, Lori, you're so moved.
And now for the August 27th, 2024 meeting. Everyone. Mia, okay.
And Larry.
But Larry's not here. Can we have a motion to approve the August 27th meeting? All in favor? Excellent. And with that, a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. All in favor? Anyone oppose?
Thank you for all your contributions, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tim, thank you so much for.
If you don't see me, you'll be the next NISBA person. Just be careful.
Mia is the new NISBA person.